Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Auburn School Committee meeting. This is February 5th, 2025. I'll call this meeting to order. This meeting is being conducted in person and being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. All are welcome to join us in person here at 5 West Street. All supporting materials have been provided to members of this body and is available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Thank you. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Our commitment, we will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any citizens' comments tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet this evening, you will find an article about Cameron and Kyle McLaughlin, who were spotlighted for their success on indoor track. Cameron and Kyle are brothers, both seniors at Auburn High School. They're both in the National Honor Society. They work at Shaw's. They do indoor track and baseball. Cameron is the long-distance runner with Kyle focusing more on the hurdles than the long jump. And both will be heading, Cameron will be heading to Central Connecticut State University for nursing and Kyle to UMass Boston for business in the fall, next fall. And also letting you know that Taylor Goodrich is up for the hometown Central Mass Girls Basketball Player of the Week, and that can be voted online. Mia DeLuca is up for the home team Central Mass Girls Hockey Player of the Week. And Colby and Luke Martin were also nominated for the Boys Basketball Player of the Week. So that can all be voted online. So a lot going on with sports at Auburn High School.
Great, yes. Some good role models there. Alright, let's seek approval for the minutes from January 22nd, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January 22nd, 2025.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, oh, no student reps?
Nope, there's a big swickle, the swickle draft tonight.
Oh, okay, alright.
Good truck.
Alright, I'll turn it over to you then for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as we do, we'll begin this evening with our student spotlight. This evening, we have Auburn Middle School with us with their Project 351 nominee Willow Bowser. And I'll have Mr. Carlson come up and you can take it away.
Thank you very much. Good evening. So it's my honor to introduce Willow Bowser. Auburn Middle School's Project 351 Ambassador for this year. Project 351 is a statewide youth leadership program that brings together all eighth-grade students from each one of the 351 middle schools in the state in Massachusetts. It's a year of service that she's dedicated herself to and committed to, which will be a project that will be brought back to Auburn. There's a civic engagement part of that. And this year marks the 15th anniversary. This was set back, Governor DeWalt Patrick called this a day of service in honor of Martin Luther King and for his commitment to community and equity. And so, you know, we found that Willow was the perfect person for this. She was nominated by her teachers for being an outstanding student and honestly, even better person, is what they said. She's a role model for her peers. She demonstrates empathy, integrity, and a strong dedication to helping others. Her leadership and character make her the perfect representative of Auburn Middle School, and we're so proud to have her as our Project 351 Ambassador. And so, congratulations, Willow. And your teachers could not say enough great things about you. So, I don't know if you want to talk about, she's very excited to be here this evening. I, you know, I owe her a day off from school tomorrow. Anyways, so I don't know if you want to talk about your experience. So, we had a day of service. It was last Saturday. Saturday, went to Boston for the day and went to the Kennedy Library. And they went out and did some community service. And do you want to talk about maybe what your project that you're bringing back this year? Or what project you're involved in?
Yeah, so this spring, I'm leading a so, um, Spring Service Clothing Drive for Cradles to Crans. It ends in around April, and we're starting to collect donations from anyone in town of all sizes.
And what about your experience there, that day?
Yeah, so we split off. We got there and we split off in a group. So I went to Cradles to Crans. And I got to meet the staff and go in the warehouse. And then I was able to make outfits for people, like girls ages seven to eight. And we got to like make a bunch of bags. And I think we impacted 15,000 people at just Cradles to Crans alone.
Wow, that's incredible, yeah.
Willow, did they have a, I know sometimes they have a keynote speaker to kind of kick things off. Did that, did they have that, that day?
I think we had Charlie Rose, who led the main ceremony when we first got to the library.
What's your favorite part of volunteering?
Um, I think it's like the amount of people that we can impact. And knowing that we can like help a community so much.
And I know that for launch day, a couple of my students have done it. They've met a lot of really amazing people, made some great friends. Did you meet some nice people?
Yeah, um, I met one of my friends, Eileen, from Paxton, who is on my service. So I'll do like a bunch of service groups with her.
Awesome, great.
Awesome.
Wow, great. I know you have some great parents, too. They look very proud of you, rightfully so. So you're making a big difference and it's really impressive. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Willow, if there's any, anything you ever want sent out to the whole district?
Definitely, yeah.
You can find my email and you can certainly send it to me. We can make sure that goes out in my notifications that go out every other week.
Okay, thank you.
I'm happy to advertise for good causes.
It's gonna be an awesome job. And so, we have, she picked a mentor teacher as well, Stephanie Mancini. She's an eighth-grade science teacher. She's gonna be kind of working partnership and kind of bridging the gap between the community and the school. So, we're really happy about that, too. So, it's gonna be awesome. So, we're excited.
That's great.
Excellent.
Gonna do great things.
It was a great pick.
Yep, definitely. Alright, alright.
Good.
Yes.
Alright, well, thank you very much. Come back again if you ever want to ask for anything or tell us about anything.
Yeah. Keep us in the loop on any fundraisers and stuff.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Alright.
Thank you for coming. You are free to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy your day off.
That he promised you.
He promised you a day off. Enjoy your day off.
If only I followed through on my promises.
Thank you.
Good to see you now. Thanks for coming.
Nicely done, Willow.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Alright, can we end the meeting there?
I know.
Cute. Alright, we'll move on to unfinished business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight, I do want to give you some updates related to the FY26 draft budget. As you know, when we pushed, when we moved forward the budget at 5.7% to the town, as we were required to at the start of January, we knew that it was highly likely that some changes would influence that, that amount and that we might have to revisit it. So I do have an update here for you tonight, starting with the Chapter 70 funding. So, once again, this year, as we were last year, we have been considered a hold harmless district, meaning that we're not getting a substantial increase. Instead, we're getting a $75 per student, which they're basing on 2,400 students. So we, like, 233 other districts are getting a very modest increase to our Chapter 70 funding this year. So for us, that will total an increase of $180,000, which for all intents and purposes really serves to be almost level funded when you're looking at the Chapter 70 money. And so I've included a few graphs here for you tonight, the first being Chapter 78. You'll see the last few years, there have been very modest increases in the Chapter 78 that we've received. The percent increase has gone from FY23, has gone steadily downward to really in FY26, it amounts to about a 1% increase in our overall Chapter 78. Chapter 70 is very much based on enrollment. And again, you'll see over the last, since FY20, our enrollment, while it's, it's changed a bit, it's really varied only by maybe 40 to 50 students in one direction or the other, right? It goes up and it comes down. And so that kind of stagnant enrollment is another influence on why we're getting this, you know, we're not seeing a substantial increase in our Chapter 70 funding. Another factor that we can be more specific about now is I've talked about the EL reimbursement money that we've received for our newly arrived students. So, previously, we were going on a very rough estimate that we had put together, but we did receive our payment that covers the time from the start of school until December, and we received $235,792.72. With the support of all of you, Mrs. Stanek and I and others have discussed that we'd like to put that money toward transportation, both for this year and next year. That's an ongoing cost that we know is significant and substantial, and that can certainly help with a significant offset for us, which I'll talk again about a little bit further down. We were also notified that the EL funding for December to June is now back in the supplemental budget from the House and Senate. And so they will be debating that to find out if that funding, which is the $104.89 per day, per student, will continue through the remainder of this year. We have also been notified that, I think I mentioned previously, that the shelter in town will be closing. When we last heard, it was over the next 18 months. So at that time, it was, we weren't sure if it would be this year or into next year. Right now, we believe that any students who are still there will be with us through this school year, and we may be in the next round of closures, which would happen August and on. So, they will, we will have some students remaining with us. So, that's still a little bit up in the air. But there is a potential for some additional funding, which certainly would help to again inform this budget, but it's a complete unknown with what that might be. We did receive our transportation bid. AA Transportation was the only one that, that put in a bid for transportation for the district. We did a very preliminary review of the bid, and in doing so, we were able to decrease the budget by $23,262, based on how their bid came in. So, again, that's another, you know, helps us in the right direction. Two weeks ago, Mrs. Stanek and I met with the town. They requested budget increase. They came in and said, could we come in with a budget at 3.8%? 3.8% is going to definitely have a negative impact on our staffing, without a doubt. They have, they, they advised us at this time that the town is not willing to access excess levy or to go for a two-and-a-half percent override. So that leaves us with just a few choices if we're going to lower the percentage increase of our budget. That being to make some cuts or to find some extra revenue, right? Those are really our only two ways to impact it. So, again, I have requested budget increase. How do we address this request from them at 3.8%? So, you'll see the first bullet. We've been able to move the regular ed transportation offset up to $400,000. So that's, and that has to do with the EL funding. So that really helps to bring down the budget a bit. We do have an added offset of $65,000 to special ed collaborative, to the special ed collaborative line. We learned two weeks ago that we're going to be receiving a credit from Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative. What that's going to allow us to do is then prepay some tuition for next school year. So that's, that's another help in the right direction.
Is that what the $65,000 is?
That's the $65,000. Yep, that's for Southern Worcester County. Yep. And that's not really for them, but that's how it came to be, because they took in more money than they needed this year. And so we're getting this credit, and we can do that again to, to prepay tuition. I am recommending that we put some placeholders for staff in at each of the schools to determine where adjustments can be made once we better know enrollment. So one position at the high school, one at the middle school, one at Swiss, and one position, whether it be at Bryn Mawr or Packerchog, it will depend on enrollment. This is reflective of the fact that this past school year, we only needed three kindergarten teachers at Bryn Mawr. That may happen again, right? So that, you know, this, this isn't anything I want to talk about with having to potentially eliminate positions. But I think this has to be on the table right now to at least come somewhere near what the town is looking to us, looking for us to do. Again, this could change if our, if the EL funding comes back and we get some money from that. But right now, it's, it's, that's unknown. So those are a few things we can do right now. I also present to the committee some potential options for revenue. And this is based on what other districts across the state often do. Right now, we have no fee for any student who drives their car to Auburn High School. And so I've given the committee, based on, we currently have 137 students who have parking passes, so that's the number I use to estimate what it might be for next year. If we did a $50 fee for a parking pass, that would give us $6,850, and likewise for $75 and $100, if we were to implement something like that. That's not a huge amount of money, but it does help in the area of, you know, covering some athletic uniforms or that kind of thing, which, which come up each time. The other opportunity here is we have not increased the fee that we charge for general ed transportation since the 2007, 2008 school year. At that time, it was put into play at $100 per student with a $250 cap, and it has stayed that way since 2007. So what you'll see here in this, the example schedule that I gave you is if we were to move to a $50 increase to that. And this is just, I'm putting this out for discussion and to see what folks think about it. You'll see on the very last page, this year in '24, '25, we took in $96,929 by, by charging the fee that we currently have. If we increase that fee, again, basing on who paid this year, the income would be $118,600. Choice two, if we increased it by $30, it would be $122,000, and choice three would get us to $140,450. So those are some options. I probably shouldn't have called them choices, right? They are options that we can do. This is all with the effort to, to meet the request of the town at the 3.8% increase. Now, what I've not, I've not factored in any additional revenue, like that 4.3%. What I have factored in is the increase in the money towards transportation to $400,000, the $65,000 for the collaborative, and the four positions. That's what's brought us to the 4.3% budget that you got in your packet today. So I, I put it out to you for discussion. I do believe that we need to move forward another draft budget this evening. This will be followed by meetings with finance and the select board. They may support 4.3. I think we've made significant effort to go from 5.7 to 4.3, and, and I think they'll appreciate that. But this, you know, the timeline keeps ticking with how this all has to make it through, the channels that it has to make it through. So, I'll, I'll stop talking now for any questions and comments that anyone might have about anything that I just shared. Yeah, I'll open it up for discussion. Did you want to start?
Sure, through the chair. I don't know if this is something we know, but do we know what the excess levy the town has right now?
I don't have, I would, I would not want to quote what a number it is.
Okay, just wondering. I guess, I'm okay with parking fees for high schoolers, sorry. I think.
Oh, she'll be gone. Oh, no, you're not. You're a junior, right?
She's a senior.
You're a senior. I'll say you don't care.
I'm not sure, 100, but you know, I could go with whatever on that. I feel like because we've raised, you know, the, now they have to pay to use our facilities, that's going to increase the sports costs, preschool costs, after-school costs. All these like small fees are gonna increase and really impact our families pretty significantly because they all add up. So I, I definitely wouldn't be okay with a $50 increase. I think in 2006 was when it started. I know there are some districts that are actually opting not to have it, only a few. But because of the way the economy is right now, I'd be okay with maybe like a $10 and then just try to remember to keep it on the agenda going forward so it can be a more slow increase for families instead of a 50% increase.
Yeah, Chloe?
So like what I've heard is that the bus costs are like rising as well. Why hasn't the cost of transportation, like for the student, increased to cover that?
I think that's what we're here to talk about tonight. Because it certainly has, right? When you think about fuel costs, insurance costs, the cost for bus drivers, right? Especially after COVID, a lot of places increased their rates for what they paid bus drivers because they couldn't get folks to drive school buses. What I know about Auburn and what makes Auburn, I think, a great place is that we've always tried to protect our families from that. Because we know that at the end of the day, everybody, you know, has their struggles, right, with, with different things. And I think that's what makes Auburn just unique in that way, is that we've tried to protect that. So there are places that don't have bus fees, but there are also a lot of places, and I was gonna bring this up later, that have athletic fees. We don't have those either. And they have hefty athletic fees. And, and so I think we want to think cautiously about it, because we've been able to protect our families for a long time that way, and we've always had the support of the town, right? So, so there's that balance. But we are hitting some tough times, and that's why we're here tonight to talk about that. So that's a great question.
Through the chair, I agree with Megan in that, like, I think, I mean, when I was in high school, I had to pay a parking fee, too. So like, I mean, that was a long time ago. So like, I think that if you, if you are a senior and you're driving a car, it's part of like a responsibility you have to park on campus, I guess. And also, I mean, if you think about it, they're driving in and out, you know, covering the cost of like the asphalt and things like that. I, I understand where Megan is coming from as well. But, I mean, I would, I personally would be okay with choice one, $25. I think going up to 50 right away is like a little much. I think we're gonna have a little coup. But I think if we start slow and like, and like Megan said, you know, we look at it again next year and maybe do like a $5 increase next year and then look at it again, like, we might, we might be able to make it more palatable.
Alright, yeah, I mean, I agree, like, these costs are never gonna decrease. So it is something we, again and again, are gonna have to look at. It needs to be increased year after year. I am in agreement with the 25. I honestly thought 50 was, I mean, not okay, but do, not, I can't even say doable, because I'm not paying it, but just less than a dollar a day to get your kid to school and back, you know, it seems like a pretty good deal to me. But I totally get it. We've gone up with preschool. We've gone up with other stuff.
Can I ask a clarifying question through the chair? It says APS bus application fee for all current students. Does that include elementary now, or no?
Oh, yeah, it always has, yeah.
Within two miles of the school?
Yeah, under two, under two miles. So I gotta be careful. It's not two miles and under. It's under two miles, or it's two miles and over.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So like Auburn Middle School, Auburn High School, they always, so, let's say I live .9 miles from Swiss, which I don't. But then I would only owe $150 for my child at Auburn Middle. Because I, because I would.
All, all middle school and high school students have.
Yes, all middle school and high school pay. But if I lived under, if I lived point, 1.9 miles from Swiss, then I would not be charged for my.
If you live over.
If you live over, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
Been a long day.
Yeah.
If I live over, if I live over two miles, two miles and over from Swanson Road, then I don't have, I only owe the $150 for my middle schooler.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And that's, that's, this fee schedule here is with a $50 increase. So this, this would all change if, if we don't go with the $50.
Yeah, I mean, choice one or choice two would be where I would go, and, and you can always look at it again next year.
I think I can come up to choice one, 25.
I'm curious, Chloe, what you think about having, having to pay for a pass for school?
So I'm actually surprised that we don't have to pay for a pass. It's because I take the bus. I think it's reasonable, especially for like college campuses. I think you'll have to pay a pass when you go to college, so you're going to have to pay a pass anyways.
That's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, I wonder, I wonder what, like they have, I wonder what colleges would have to pay, like, out of curiosity.
All colleges pay.
Yeah, no, I know, but I wonder how much that pass is. I bet you it's more than 100 bucks.
So we just got to decide, do we want, I guess, the amount. We figured out 25, right, would work for the bus. Honestly, I think $100 to ask these kids should have jobs, you know, they should, they're paying for a car.
Less than a dollar a day.
Done. They're paying for their own car. They're paying for their own gas. I think it's, honestly, I think $100. I'm pretty sure I paid $100 40 years ago when I went, you know, parked at school, too. So, is anyone opposed to the $100 parking pass fee?
How do you think the kids will take it?
I think there will be some negative outlook.
They probably won't like that very much, but the money has to come from somewhere.
It's gotta come from.
Yeah. And that was my other point I was trying to make, was that the money has to come from somewhere. It doesn't grow on trees, obviously. And I do care about the many, many people in this town that pay taxes and don't use our schools. You know, and they don't use our facilities, and they don't use our buses. They're paying, they're getting stuck with the bill, too. So, and I know like the, the seniors in town are struggling just to pay for their own heat and utilities. I'm glad we're finding ways to increase our money without throwing it on them and throwing it on, you know, the rest of, even a lot of our town meeting members don't even use the schools. So I think this is a good effort. I think when you go back to the BOS and FinCom and say, you know, we are trying, we're showing good intent and trying to find money other ways. But yeah, I, I do agree with you. The $50 is a lot. 300 for a family is a lot. But I think it's coming. I mean, I hate to say it. I just don't know.
Well, I will say just around, so Grafton's bus fee is $200 a student with a $400 cap, and Sutton is $180 with a $360 cap. And as I said, the places around that don't have bus fees have athletic fees. So it's, it's, you know.
Which I wouldn't rule out in the future either, you know. So, certainly not for next year. But, yeah. Through the chair, like in, in some respects, our hands are tied. Like, we have to stay within the constraints of the budget and what the town can do for us and what the people in town are providing for us. But at the same time, like, we do need streams of revenue. So unfortunately, we, we are, hands are tied and will be further tied in the future.
Yeah, and I think the hard part is, as I said, you know, the schools have been in a unique position for a long time. We haven't had to do this, but things change.
Through the chair, I do just want to point out, it's a public school, right? Like, our, our families aren't paying tuition and all of that. And I just want us to be cognizant of that. We've increased a lot recently, but.
Yep.
Alright, so are we okay with 25 increase on the bus and 100 for the parking pass? Yeah, those, yeah. Don't worry, Chloe, you'll be in college. Don't worry. Yeah, it is unfortunate, but I feel we have to. So I need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to increase bus fees by $25 per student with the continuation of the graduated pay scale adjusted for the approved increase and $100 yearly fee for student parking.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, well, it's not totally what you wanted, but something.
Nope, that's good, that's good. I will say, with this draft budget, I have to think about this. What I didn't put on here is a vote for the new amount at 4.31%. But.
Well, that was based on this, right?
I know, I want, well, it, yeah, it was, it didn't have this included, because I didn't know where we were gonna end up with it. So I couldn't do that. So what I may do is make a, I'm gonna do a second draft with taking some of that into account, because another, it's gonna be another probably $25,000 or $30,000, which would move this a little bit. I just couldn't do that till I knew where we were gonna land.
So is that gonna screw up the schedule, then, of?
We're gonna have to think about that. Like, we could potentially have to have, I, I'll talk to the town tomorrow. We might have to have an emergency, just to vote on the budget next week.
And Monday meeting, you won't have a number?
Mon, I don't need it for Monday.
Oh, you don't, okay.
No, I don't need it for Monday. The Monday meeting is about the tuition.
Oh, okay.
Just about the tuition. So that's a separate thing altogether.
Okay.
So let me see, with giving that, I'm gonna give it a good shot. I might look historically at a couple of years for parking passes and come up with a, like, a number that's more solid versus just using this year to see where that'll land us. And we'll go from there. So I won't ask for a motion on this yet tonight. So I won't ask for a motion on this yet tonight.
Okay.
But I I guess, I guess what I might want a motion on, however, is the agreement with the use of the L money to offset tuition to four hundred thousand dollars. The sixty, the sixty-five thousand dollar offset for the collaborative. I don't think I need a vote on that, but to agree with the four positions that may need to be cut. And I think we should have something on that because that'll, that'll give me a much better baseline that if I had to go forward to the select board, I could say, well, we're still considering this, but right now we're at four point three, you know? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Are you in agreement with those changes?
Anyone not in agreement? No? Sam, you're good.
It's at the bottom of the second page, the four hundred thousand dollars and the four positions.
All right, um, let's seek a motion to approve.
And the use of the L money, sorry.
L money. So we'll do them separate then.
So I'll make a motion to increase the regular education transportation offset to four hundred thousand.
Through the use of the L money.
Through the use of the L money.
I second, sorry.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, do the sixty-five thousand one? That I don't, you don't need to do as an offset, but I think.
Placeholders?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to enter placeholders for staffing at each of the schools and determine where adjustments to staffing can be made once enrollment numbers are better known, with one at Auburn High School, one at Auburn Middle School, one at Swanson Road Intermediate School, and one at Bryn Mawr slash Packer Chalk.
I will begrudgingly second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's good.
And if the credit thing needs a vote, then just bring it to the next thing.
Yep.
Blah, okay. All right, move on to the school year calendar.
School year calendar. So as you know, at the last meeting, I brought forward the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar. There was a request by the committee to survey the families and staff regarding some of the things that were included in that calendar. And so you'll see a summary of the results included in the packet. And overall, both staff, family, and then as combined, supported the initial calendar as presented, which provides for a full day off of school for the Wednesday before the Thanksgiving break. And it has us in school on December twenty-second, which is a Monday and a half day on December twenty-third, which is a Tuesday. And then we don't return to school again until January fifth. So it was good to see that everyone was in support of that, so I appreciated the suggestion to do that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year calendar as presented by the superintendent.
Second. Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that is about, I want to backtrack just for a second because I forgot to mention this. The parking pass for the high school, I presented the idea to you. That was actually given to me by a parent at the high school. So I just want to say that they're also thinking in the same lines of like, why aren't we paying for this? This seems crazy, so anyway, sorry today.
Through the chair, we would never run out of parking spots, right? I'm just thinking, kids paying and then they're like, I can't get a parking spot.
Like, I don't think so, so I think the last check we did, there were still close to forty open spots on a typical day. So that's a, that's a pretty good buffer.
Okay, yeah, that is. All right, good point, Meg, yes, okay.
Through the chair, just because I like do not remember, did this, did the the new calendar change from last time?
No.
Okay, good to know.
No, that's what what I brought in to present, but then that's, was voted and was supported, so.
Okay, awesome. I felt like it looked the same, but I was like, I think I'm missing something.
Yeah, no, it stayed the same, yep.
Through the chair, I'm surprised how close the half day before Thanksgiving was.
Yeah, for the families, yeah.
Yeah. All right, we'll move on to new business, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, new business.
Yep. So in your packet, Mr. DeLongchamp will be with us at the next meeting, but wanted to share with you for some of the changes so that you're prepared if you have any questions about any of this. I think the most significant that he'll talk about is the change to the number of credits, potentially. So looking to increase them by ten credits. I think some students lose a little steam and a little enthusiasm toward the end with some electives when they don't really have to have them in order to graduate. And so feeling that if they increase the number of credits required, they'll have a little bit greater participation. But he'll talk more about that when he comes. So just wanted you to have a chance to take a look before he comes.
Yeah, I I was shocked to see the Child Development elective being taken away.
Sad, that was my favorite class.
Oh, well, and it's just so good for like kids to learn that and stuff. But, um, yeah, all right, I'll question him that. So give him the heads up, that's coming.
I said the same thing. I loved that class.
The next item under new business is residential tuition. Not so much a new student anymore. This is a student who started with us in the fall, who had been placed in a residential placement. At the time he came in, we had not budgeted for the cost of the residential placement. And so there was a previous request to you to use special education stabilization for this. At the time, it was about eighty or eighty-two thousand dollars. We're looking to ask the town for another three months of tuition at the cost of eighty-seven thousand dollars. We most likely will have to come back one more time. And I am on the select board agenda for Monday night to ask them for this as well. Mrs. Stanek did fill in. She provided you a current balance of the account at five hundred and five thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-eight cents.
Okay, any questions or comments about that? Seek a motion to approve?
Make a motion to utilize the special education stabilization account in the amount of eighty-seven thousand dollars to cover three months of residential tuition for a new student.
Second. Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Good luck Monday, giving that.
All right, and just giving an update to the community that kindergarten and registration and preschool applications are now being accepted. Again, the age limit, right, they have to be of age by September first. But all the information is on our website. It also went out in my notification. So folks register soon and early and so that we know who's coming to us, it would be appreciated.
The chair, do we have some registrations already?
I think we have actually gotten a few, yeah. Yeah, yep, people look for it. They call early for that, yeah.
They can't wait.
I'm second, I think we have twenty preschool registrations.
Wow, oh, great, yeah.
Yeah, so they do come in quickly. Just also wanted to give the committee an update on the Power School cybersecurity breach. This message did go out to families. They should be watching for a communication from Experian related to identity protection and credit monitoring services. I just want to keep getting it out there because I know myself, I get all kind of email that I'm like, when do I, I don't have Experian, I'm not gonna look at that. I hope people are looking for that and watching for it because seemingly it will be offered. I don't know to everyone. Power School has been lacking in their communication since this last one a little bit. And so I'm hoping to hear something again soon or to know that someone receives something like this, but I have not heard yet, so. I just want to try and get this out as much as I can so people are watching for it. And finally, there's the school committee dates. So I'm not able to attend the March nineteenth school committee meeting. And given that the budget considerations that may be, continue to be forthcoming, I'm requesting that we cancel the March fifth and March nineteenth meetings and schedule meetings to be held on February twenty-sixth and March twelfth. I'm also requesting that the March twelfth meeting begin at five thirty because it is the night of the all-town band concert. So, but that, the concert starts at six thirty and normally our meetings run roughly an hour, so.
So should we do it five?
Yeah, could we do five?
Oh, five's fine with me.
We have a band.
I have a band too.
Oh, gotta get her there.
Five is fine with me.
You'll need time to park and stuff too, so, all right, so.
Do we want to, through the chair, should we do it over there? Would that make it easier for you? Could we get a room there?
Um, we could get a big enough room for our, for us.
I don't know if it would be easier for you either way.
I mean, we can't use presentation room or anything, but we have.
With TV and stuff?
Uh, yeah, there's no cable, yeah.
Especially leading up to budget.
If you want to do four thirty, if you think you need that time.
No, I'm more for you, I can, it's fine, I can get there whenever.
Okay, yeah.
No big deal.
Yeah, I'll go afterwards, but really, you know, usually our meetings are about an hour, so.
I'll do four thirty, I'll do noon, I don't care.
I mean, I would do four, I mean, it's totally up to everything.
I don't know about.
I'm just looking at the date.
Oh, yeah, with Brooke too, and, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I could do four thirty, be honest.
Let's do four thirty.
Okay.
All right. Chloe, you good with that?
We just keep moving it.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, the band.
Okay.
How about two forty-five?
Yeah.
And I'll ask Andy if we can send updated invites for all of those so that everybody knows.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for accommodating that. Well, I guess we still need a motion though.
I'll make a motion to cancel the March fifth and March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five meetings. Schedule meetings to be held on February twenty-sixth and March twelfth and revise the start time of, start time of the March twelfth, twenty-twenty-five meeting to begin at four thirty.
See second.
Where's Brooke?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And you have over a month to plan for it, so hopefully Brooke won't have a showing or something and stuff too. All right, Mr. Keller, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, I just have a quick update tonight. It's been a while since I've talked about math textbooks, and so I just wanted to give you an update on where we stand with that. Beginning back last school year, at the beginning of last school year, we started looking at, sorry, I pulled together a committee to assess strengths and weaknesses of our existing math textbooks. K to five and six to eight, we had math textbooks that were coming off of their, the contract that we signed. So we met together and had kind of initial conversations and talked about some of the things that we want to make sure that a textbook has and some of the agreements that we all came to. So we talked about, first and foremost, that there is no such thing as a perfect curriculum program. It comes down to teachers and the resources that they use and the connections that they build in the classroom. We talked about it would be lovely to have a consistent program K to eight, but not a necessity. So ultimately, if we felt like there was a program or a textbook that was right for middle school and it was a different publisher for elementary, that that is something that we would certainly pursue. I didn't want anybody to feel as though we were pushing toward a K to eight program, though, as I said, it would be lovely because it it can make transitions nice. Ensuring that the content was, you know, for the textbook publisher would be grade level appropriate and support a range of learners, fitting in with our UDL approach that we have across the district that you have heard plenty about over the years, that there would be varied approaches and that we, it would support all of our kids. Those kids who are below grade level, those kids who are above grade level, and it would be focused on the kids that are in front of us, not saying, well, the high school kids need X and therefore we need a program that will do that. So we wanted to make sure that if if seventh grade teachers were on the committee, which there are, that it was appropriate for them and at all levels. So those are the things we all talked about and agreed for. This is just a quick reference, and I kind of touched on this already, but Richard Elmore, who was a professor at Harvard University, talks about the instructional core. And you can see in that bottom right-hand side, that's where content is, but it is just one piece of of what, of what we want to focus on. It's teachers and staff, it's students, and all those pieces coming together are what make a successful classroom. And so the math textbook committee, we had a, we have a good amount of people, so I want to acknowledge everyone on this list. I'm gonna read their names because they have spent a whole lot of time over the course of the past, I think, fourteen months. Allison Simeno, Deidre Levesque, Gina Fermannick, Gillian Anderson, Kristin Sandberg, Nicole Elaine, Tara Connor, Brooke Beverly, and Cheryl Carlson at the K to two level, coming from Swanson Road, Kelly Conerton, Erin Kane, Michelle Caplet, Paula Reno, Sarah Kay, Stephanie Fontaine, and Susan Lopez. And then at the middle school, John Bastian, Marie Mahan, Monique Mazone, and Jill Clough have made up our entire committee. And so, as I said, we've had a whole lot of meetings, and so I'll just talk briefly about the path that we've been on. So in November of twenty-twenty-three, we, I put out feelers to principals and to the district about people who would be interested in being a part of this. And so we got together, discussed strengths and weaknesses of our existing program. It was at that time that we decided we wanted to extend Big Ideas, which is the middle school textbook, for one year so that we could make an informed decision K to eight. And we had, as I mentioned earlier, we had conversations about strengths and weaknesses of our current textbooks. We didn't, if if we felt like Big Ideas was was serving our students well, then we would have continued with that. You've heard me say many times, a big initiative on the part of the Department of Education is high-quality instructional materials. This HQIM is a big piece of what Desi talks about. And so looking at two different websites, Ed Reports, which is a na, a national site, and then Curate, which is Massachusetts, has teachers evaluating different instructional materials. We looked at that site and identified, I think we wound up identifying seven different textbooks that we felt like could potentially serve our needs. Together, we developed a rubric for evaluating textbooks. We then, I then reached out to different textbook companies, had conversations with them, and set up presentations. They shared materials with us, presented to all of us, and then we spent time with those materials reviewing. Then ultimately, in August of this past year, we identified two finalists. And so we identified iReady, which is from Curriculum Associates. And then we identified Reveal Math, which is from McGraw-Hill. So we have spent, since August of, at the beginning of this school year, we have been doing deep dives into those two textbooks. September, November, reviewing those materials. And then in December and January, we went out on site visits. So a middle school team went out in December to do two different sites. And then the elementary team went out to two different sites in January. I also sent out surveys, about twenty, sent surveys to twenty different districts, asking them a series of questions. And so that's where we're at right now. We actually had an hour and a half Q and A session today with one of the publishers. And then next Wednesday is with the other publisher, again, another, you know, hour and a half Q and A with with that one. And then the goal is to make our decision by the end of February so that we can then get to our next step, which is to make that recommendation for either the K to five, six to eight, or K to eight textbook. And this has been ongoing, but outlining a clear, comprehensive, cohesive implementation plan with the goal of having staff PD in the spring so people can have the summer preparing for, and we can do some professional development over the summer and the fall. And a big part of this is making sure that we're integrating vertically, having those conversations between two and three, five and six, and then monitoring the implementation of the program, so observations, assessment data, seeking feedback from teachers, students, and families. So I will be coming to you, I would say, and then, within the next two meetings, telling you ultimately what our recommendation is for a textbook, but I wanted to give you an update on where we stand at the moment.
Chloe, did you have any idea that so much went into picking a textbook? It's pretty crazy. Well, thank you to all of those involved, that is a lot of work.
Well, thank the town as well. And working with them, these programs are very expensive. And in collaboration with them, we're going to be able to use some of our CIP money for the purchase.
Oh, good, okay.
It could be close to four hundred thousand dollars. So we're very appreciative that they were willing to work with us in that way to do that because otherwise we would not have, we wouldn't, just simply wouldn't have been able to do it this year.
Are they all like the same price generally, or is it?
They're in the, they're in the same ballpark, it all, it all kind of.
A lot.
Yeah.
How much a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Through the chair, is it the same iReady that the younger kids are currently using for like assessments and things?
Yes, so, yeah, so it's, you know, that is their assessment and their, you know, what's called my plan. So you can, you take the assessment and then you can, as a student and a teacher, say, okay, these are the things you need to work on. And so this is another whole component of that where it's their, it's their textbook that they're using in the classroom. So it is related to that, yes.
And with iReady, like, it's my path. They, if you do really well, they they like, or if you struggle, they build it directly towards the child specifically.
Yeah.
All right, wow, all right, well, thank you, yes. And we don't have Ms. Stanek here tonight.
We don't, but she did provide you with a year-to-date budget report for the FY twenty-five school year for your review. And she also provided you with a list of budget transfers dated January thirtieth between the same series and different series for which she is seeking your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of transfers dated January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, as presented by the business manager.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 That's a vote. And we do need executive session tonight.
We do.
Yes. So I would seek a motion. So I would seek a motion to move into executive session.
I'll make a motion to move into executive session.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll call vote. Sam? Yes.
Yes.
Every time.
Meg?
Yes.
Chloe?
Yeah.
Yeah. Myself, yes. And we are not coming back, so, all right, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.